Good evening, everybody. We're going to call this meeting to order. The first item on our agenda is a special session. And to move into special session, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. There's a motion and second to go into special session. Any discussion? All in favor of going into special session, please say aye. Any opposed, say no. We will now have a Community Development Block Grant Public Hearing. This will be the first in a series of public hearings. And before we start the hearing, I would like to recognize the city's consultants who are here with us tonight. We have Jonathan Russell and Walter Haglund, and they are with Urban Design Ventures. And they are the city's consultant with our CDBG Consolidated Plan. I met with them earlier today, and I know they'll be engaging other members of the staff and community in the coming days and weeks. So we look forward to hearing their report. And they're also here to hear members of the public. So with that, I'll ask Jonathan Kearns, our Community Development Manager, to come up and get the hearing started.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the mayor pointed out, representatives of Urban Design Ventures are here this evening, and they've been hired by the City of Hagerstown to assist in the Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Planning Process. And our goal with Urban Design Ventures is to create a meaningful CDBG Consolidated Plan and all relevant planning documents that are meaningful and also work in concert with our existing plans and efforts, also meeting federal requirements. So with that said, the purpose of this public hearing is to gather information on housing and community development needs for the city's five-year consolidated plan, the annual action plan, and to solicit the views and comments of individuals and organizations concerning any impediments to fair housing choice in the city for the development of the city's analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. The city must submit these required planning documents to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in order to receive federal CDBG entitlement funds. The City of Hagerstown is currently in the process of preparing its five-year consolidated plan for fiscal year 2016 through 2020, its annual action plan for fiscal year 2016, and its analysis of impediments for fair housing choice for the CDBG program. The five-year consolidated plan is a long-range strategic planning document that examines the needs within the community such as housing, social service, employment, homeless, and non-housing special needs. The annual action plan is a document created every year that identifies specific projects that meet the priorities that are outlined in the five-year consolidated plan. The analysis of impediments to fair housing choice, also known as an AI, examines the housing environment of the jurisdiction of the City of Hagerstown through the lens of the Fair Housing Act of 1968. As part of the CDBG planning process, the city is required to identify any existing or potential impediments to fair housing in the City of Hagerstown. The analysis of impediments will then create goals and strategies to mitigate these impediments over the next five-year period. After tonight's hearing, the City of Hagerstown will continue to accept written comments on the required CDBG planning documents until January 12, 2015. For the CDBG planning process, citizens are also encouraged to participate in an online survey which can be accessed via the city website at hagerstownmd.org. Hard copies are also available here tonight for that survey. Agency surveys are also available here tonight in hard copy, and they can be obtained at our office at the Department of Community and Economic Development, 14 North Potomac Street, Suite 200A. This concludes staff comments.
Thanks. And I do want to apologize for our late start. We got hung up at the university with our meeting with the delegation, and then the transition and coming back, so wanted to apologize for that. We do have four people signed up to speak. Would like to remind folks that our meetings are televised and recorded, so your comments will be on air and on tape and on YouTube. So with that, I will invite Mr. John Menard to come forward.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm here representing the HNDP, Hagerstown Home Store, this evening. You know, and first, of course, we want to thank you for your past support of the home store for our down payment assistance program that we administer to first-time homebuyers that are purchasing within the city limits of Hagerstown. As you know, we are a qualified community partner with the state of Maryland, and by using the funds from CDBG through the Hagerstown Home Store to administer the program, we are able to obtain generally matching funds through the state of Maryland. And since this program began in 2007, we've had 54 clients that bought within the city limits using the CDBG funds for down payment assistance, a total of $189,000, with another $173,000 matched by the state. So it's been a significant contribution for first-time homebuyers. What we'd also like to say is we'd like the city to consider enhancing their CDBG performance by providing some fair housing counseling to the home store through a block grant. This would allow the city to report the total number of individuals that we serve for all areas of counseling and down payment assistance in their annual report to HUD. For fiscal year 2014, we have counseled 579 clients for first-time buyers. Again, I want to keep it short, but I want to thank the city for their support in the past and hope we can continue on your support in fiscal year 2016. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Ms. Robyn Roberson. Hello.
I'm here to speak on behalf of the Community Free Clinic, and I would like to begin by thanking you for your many years of support and dedication, commitment to the laboratory program of the Community Free Clinic. We are seeing very stable numbers of new clients coming through our doors even in light of healthcare reform. We are registering between 20 and 30 new patients every month, which is consistently what we had been doing prior to the inception of the program. So the numbers of new patients coming through our doors are very stable and definitely increase in the winter months. The Community Development Block Program has historically helped to fund our laboratory program, and as many of you know, it's very difficult to treat an individual patient without being able to see exactly what is going on with their disease process. And one of the ways, one of the easiest and most valuable ways to see that picture is through laboratory testing. As you know, medical testing is highly expensive. Even at a discounted rate, we still would not be able to afford to perform these tests on our clinic patients. It is our hope that with this five-year plan, that you will continue to consider the patients and citizens of the City of Hagerstown and Washington County in meeting their basic healthcare needs. These are citizens that are underprivileged, underserved, underinsured, or totally uninsured, and have truly nowhere else to go for healthcare. We are their healthcare safety net, and without the Community Free Clinic, they would be utilizing the hospital emergency room for primary care, which would end up costing all of us more money in tax dollars. So we hope to partner with you in the future, and we hope to begin a program also to address some mental health needs in our community. There's an ever-increasing population who really need access to mental health care. So our priority will always be laboratory testing because without that, we can't effectively and safely treat our patients. But we also would like to begin to be able to address some of the healthcare crises that our community is facing as a whole. So, thank you for your time, and thanks for listening.
Thank you, Robyn. Next up is Mr. Doug Wright. Hello.
I'm here to, first, well, I'm here to represent Holly Place, Senior Alternative Living. We provide respite care for 15 folks who need assisted living here on South Potomac Street, and we take care of them 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. The past support of the city and the CDBG money has been critical to providing that care, particularly the food program that you all assist us with. It allows us to continue to provide residence and care for these 15 folks who really have no other place to go for this type of care for no much more than their social security. And it's, your continued support is greatly needed, and we appreciate all the support that the city has given us in the past. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Jennifer Carball. Oh, I'm sorry. You said you didn't want to testify? Okay. Well, we know you're here, and you represent the Boys and Girls Club, so thank you for being here. Is there anyone who did not sign up who wishes to speak? Well, with that, we will keep the record open for written comments to be submitted. So if you are listening out there in the viewing audience and have some input, please submit your written comments, and those will be taken into consideration. Yes, sir.
I had a question for staff real quick. It says, "If the city would undertake an activity that would result in the displacement of families or individuals, then the city would utilize its policy for minimizing such displacement. Furthermore, the city is responsible for replacing all low- and moderate-income housing units that may be demolished or converted as a result of CDBG funds." So does that mean if a single dollar is expended on an agency that is involved in the removal and replacement, is that considered part of it? Or does it have to be expended on...
The direct project.
The project itself.
I believe it's the direct project. For instance, if we would have CDBG fundings here for the city, it would be the easiest way to describe it. We could use CDBG funds on a separate project that's rehabilitating an existing home, and that wouldn't apply the requirements you're referring to on that rehabilitation. If we had a separate project where we were demolishing housing that was previously low moderate-income housing, we would have to comply with that requirement on that separate project.
Okay. And while I certainly understand low and moderate income levels, you know, demographic levels, census tract levels within the city, when it specifies low and moderate-income housing units, let's say that one of the projects that the city undertakes through CDBG funding removes a building downtown, and let's say it's a vacant apartment building. What quantifies going back and determining whether or not that's a low or moderate-income building?
Yeah, that's...
Because I got a list here that we were given previously from, I think this came from the Housing Authority at some point, which identifies specifically developments, if you will, that are either public housing or Section 8 voucher usage. I guess I'm just trying to figure out if we're involved in some project, and there happens to be, you know, a certain rent level at that point for that particular piece of property, does it go back and see what the last rent was?
Yeah, it would go back to the most recent occupant, but then there are different levels of defining what, I think you're referring to, a lot of these rules come either from the URA, which is, I think, the Urban Relocation Act, or the one-for-one replacement regulations in the Code of Federal Regulations. There's different definitions of what is a vacant occupable dwelling unit. So there could be an instance where, say, there's a dwelling unit that is substandard, and the cost of renovation is unreasonable, even if it was occupied by a low moderate-income household, it may be exempt from that regulation of needing to be replaced again.
Look, I'm thinking the top of my head, the building, I guess, next door, the city goes and renovates it, and now has, you know, four apartments, or whatever the number is. And funds are expended to undertake that. If CDBG funds are involved, and the goal is, you know, to up that area and that rentable standard, frankly, I guess I'm assuming you don't go out and find four other units somewhere to replace that with. And if that's the case, especially on the private unit side, I would find it hard to believe that every one of the properties you would encounter to undertake that type of investment interest in, you wouldn't have to determine to go find somewhere else because all you're doing then is adding to that number. You know what I mean?
I understand. Yeah, the one-for-one replacement regulations, when it talks about replacement of low mod housing, in my opinion, it is a little gray, and it's not clearly defined on how far you go back.
I mean, that statement's real gray.
I know, for instance, one thing we look at with the CDBG program for the renovation of the artist apartment project, for the purpose of CDBG, we meet our CDBG compliance requirements initially once we occupy at least 51% of the units with low moderate-income households. And then after that initial occupancy with CDBG, we don't have any additional CDBG tying with that. So after the initial households would move out, there's no income restrictions, so therefore...
I understand.
They could then be a higher income household.
Thank you.
Two clarifications, John. One, it's clear, it's my understanding that the five-year plan is a guide, it's a general guide, but the annual decisions are still the ones that actually allocate the money.
Correct.
And they have to generally within the five-year plan, but it doesn't, that plan doesn't allocate funds specifically.
That's my...
It's like congressional authorizations versus appropriations.
The higher-level plan is the five-year plan, and then, of course, like you mentioned, the strategic plan or the annual plan is the more distinct...
Well, that's the way we actually distribute the money.
Yes.
I just want to make that clear.
And generally, the five-year plan, once, when that's developed, the action plan in that same year is part of the five-year plan.
Yeah.
So it's one and the same for that first year, and then separately, it's the action plan each year thereafter.
And the second thing is, for the benefit of people listening in, what is the timetable for this process?
It's typically a process which will start in the fall, which we're starting now in the fall of the year or our fiscal year. So it's a process that then will usually end up being submitted to HUD where the final planning documents are sent to HUD in the late spring or early summer.
Well, but what's the local process? What steps come after this, and about when would they be?
Let me refer to my schedule here, since it is a little...
That's fine.
We will typically have an action plan and consolidated plan on display in the spring of next year, so the spring of 2015. We'll also hold a second public hearing for the consolidated plan and action plan going on display. And then, at the end of that display period, we will have, in combination generally with our budget approval, we'll have the finalization of the plan documents, and those are typically sent to the HUD Baltimore office in June. Federal requirements, it's based upon when HUD and the federal budget is also solidified, so that schedule may get delayed.
Okay. So your goal is to have it finalized at the same time the annual allocation process takes place, which is within the budget?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Well, with that, we will close the hearing as well as the special session, and we'll go into our work session agenda, the first topic of which is our FY14 Solidated Annual Financial Report presentation. So I'll invite staff to come up with our consultants.
There, I might... There you go. There you go. Sorry.
Good evening. This evening, I know we're a little behind schedule, so I will try to give you the highlights, but still touch on some of the most key points because one of the things that we wish to do tonight is just give a brief overview of how we ended fiscally our fiscal year 14, which ended on June 30, 2014. As part of this, our comprehensive annual financial report, as the mayor said, we also commonly refer to it as CAFR. It's a very inclusive document. Part of our year-end process and part of our audit is then, as soon as that occurs, we produce this document. Just wanted to start off the evening by some quick introductions. On the far left is Rena Rose, our accounting manager here at the City of Hagerstown, very instrumental, primary point of contact, and responsible for the oversight to make sure that everything that is needed for the audit is done and prepared and works, of course, closely with our auditors while they're here. Also next to me, SB and Company, is the company that has done our audit and assisted with the CAFR, I think this is the fourth year, so the prior three years. With us tonight from SB and Company, we have Chris Lehman. And he's one of, who was our, I guess, our account manager.
Yep.
So one of the very most important things to just highlight is the fact that we do undergo this annual audit, and it is done and performed by an independent accounting firm, our CPA firm. So it's not a thing that we are necessarily doing all internally, and the document that you have, our CAFR, actually is accessible from our City of Hagerstown website, and we have not only the current year there, but several, the prior four years as well, much like we do the budget document. Within this document, if you will flip to page 75, page 75 covers the general fund. And first and foremost, I just wanted to give us a brief overview and highlight the fact that in fiscal year 14, we ended the year with about $160,000 surplus. Within fiscal year 14, and within that surplus number of $160,000, we did, there are several key things that I just wanted to take the time to mention. This schedule that I'm showing you, page 75 is the end. 73, 74, 75 is the general fund statement. It's one that primarily we will reference most often from this book, and general fund is one that we most often discuss during the budget topics as well. So the general fund, $160,000 surplus, within that number, we did have $164,000 that we repaid CDBG funds for massive property. So that is, that's net of that number, that is out of that number. One of the other things that we touched upon briefly a few weeks ago, myself and Chief Holtzman, is our Safe Speed for School program. And in the documents that I presented at that time, if you look, if you flip back on the revenue side, that program was under budget by $332,000 for fiscal year 14. Our other key revenue source, which is property taxes, and this is total property taxes, real estate plus corporate personal property, was over budget by about $890,000. And then, last but not least, one of the areas, this is, again, is not a surprise, I think we reported on it a couple of times throughout fiscal year 14. If you remember, last winter, we had quite a number of weather-related events over the winter, and our snow removal was over budget by $152,000. So given all those factors, we still, within the general fund, ended $160,000 surplus, and comparatively within our budget, we ended the year $194,000 over budget, which is all very good key fiscal financial measures.
Based on a budget of $38 million.
And a, thank you very much, yes, and a total budget of $38 million. So...
And I always mention that because that puts so much pressure on finance and others to manage our finances within a tight budget. Finishing with $160,000 surplus is a good thing, but...
Yes, it is.
It's a lot of holding your breath when you've got a $38 million budget.
Yes. Before we can even get to this point, it takes the work of the entire city staff and the city team and the department managers to do that job. So thank you for... Some of the other things that we'll touch base on, general fund, fund balance, that's always one of the key things that people often ask about. In total, our fund balance, we ended the year with $9.9 million, and of that $9.9 million, $8.1 million is in unassigned. And you can see that information page 16, 17, and 18. Aside from the, where we ended in the fund balance with the $9.9 million, the unassigned $8.1 million figure, that correlates to about 2.6 months of expenditure. So, again, a good measurement, a good tool. We don't want to get below two months, but 2.6 is great, and pretty much for the past several years, we've been right around 2.4, 2.5, 2.6. So very consistent. And then, percentage-wise, that's one of the things that's in our policy, we're at Next, I want to jump us to, and I apologize for jumping around, but again, I want to make sure we cover some of the big key topics. I want to turn our attention to page 24 and spend just a few minutes, if we could, on our business-type funds, our enterprise funds. And primarily, in our enterprise funds, just for those who can't see this yet at home, it's our electric, water, wastewater, and parking facilities. The golf course is also part of this, as well as property management, but they are much smaller funds in nature compared to the amount of volume and charges that happen in the utility. Within the electric fund, in fiscal year 14, one of the key numbers on page 24 is that changes in net position, we ended the year to the, with about a $588,000 surplus. And if you remember, the prior year, it was about the same amount, but it was a deficit. And that most typically happens for us, that we see an electric fund where we have one year, it's a deficit, the next year is a surplus, almost like a seesaw, it balances. And again, as we make changes to the rates, and as we see changes in our prices that we pay for our purchasing power, those timing issues is what has resulted in that number for both fiscal year 13 and 14. The water funds ended the year strongly, they ended the year at $3.5 million. Not much of a surprise, I think that was discussed at the point that we looked at during the five-year rate study. And I guess one of the key areas is wastewater fund. And we lost or had a deficit of $1 million. And again, that's a number that we reviewed during the rate study. It's one of the reasons why we were able to incorporate the largest percentage change in our charges for services and put them in place in fiscal year 16 because of the nature of where our wastewater fund operation was. With that, we'll look at one more schedule, if I could.
Could you recite the GASB charges? What change?
Yes.
What do those reflect?
Okay. There was a GASB?
Yep. GASB 65 required that previously bond issuance cost was capitalized and deferred over the life of the outstanding debt.
Cost of issue?
Yep.
So it's cost of issue?
Right. And now the GASB change where those are now period expenses and expensed as they occur rather than capitalized.
Rather than being spread...
And amortized over the life of the debt.
Okay.
So that line that you will see would have been the balance that would have been within our balance, or what we were amortizing and deferring in our fiscal year 13 statements. So, again, because of the GASB changes, we're changing our fund balance.
Is that a one-time catch-up?
Yes, that's...
Yeah, that's writing off. Everything as of June 30, 13, that had not been amortized was written off.
So it's a catch-up number that won't...
Right. Then everything going forward would be a period expense.
Thank you.
As applicable.
And then, just real quick, on page 16, our citywide statement. And these columns reflect governmental activities, and governmental activities is our general fund. It's also our general CIP fund, and it includes our CDBG fund, economic redevelopment, and includes all those areas that we did not just talk about briefly on that other page, which is all within the business-type activity column. And I want to just draw your attention, I think, at this point, to the bottom where we show our net assets, and we can see our net position. Fiscal year 14, we have a very strong ending financial position, but just want to remind everybody that we do have a new GASB, GASB 68, and that will take place, and we will see this change next year, fiscal year 15. So what's going to happen within this section of our citywide statement, we're going to actually see our unfunded pension liability be put in our liability section, which is going to reduce the amount of fund balance that we have in this statement. And really and truly throughout the rest, there's going to be some additional probably disclosures and language that we're going to have, but predominantly where you're going to see the largest impact is on this statement. You're not going to necessarily see it reflected within the general fund or within those enterprise funds that we just looked at very quickly. Okay? And Chris, we'll probably...
Actually, I can elaborate now because that's probably a good segue before I get into the details, but GASB is basically getting away from funding, and previously, what would happen is the only way the city would have a liability in their financial statements is to the... is to the extent that they weren't funding the ARC or the annual required contribution. GASB is getting away with that because a lot of governments aren't funding their ARCs. And, you know, you wouldn't see any, anything in the statements that will lose to the fact that there's no funding going on, and then you would go to the back and say, oh, well, there's a, there could be a large unfunded liability. So now what they're doing with sixty-seven, that was implemented within these financial statements, is just footnote disclosures and basically saying, here's the actuarially determined total pension liability minus the value of the assets gets you to a net pension liability, which is disclosed within 2014. Next year, that will be required to be shown on the entity-wide financial statements. So it's not affecting general fund or fund financial statements. But that would be a decrease within the unrestricted net position category of the, of the financial statements.
So you said those pension liabilities are in this report?
The, it's disclosed, but it's, GASB doesn't require that to be on the financial statements until next year.
Yes, and that, and that's some of the final talking points. I do want to, actually, if you flip back really quickly. On page, note five, and it, specifically with the pension, it starts on page sixty-one. On page sixty-seven, you'll actually see the information that we currently have from our actuary. And this information that we're going to show is a twenty-six million dollar, basically unfunded pension liability, and that's for our police and fire pension only. Our Maryland state retirement system is going to be giving us those same types of figures. I just don't have them yet. So if we, if nothing else changes and we end the year, we're going to have a reduction and we're going to recording the liability of twenty-six million. And then our unrestricted total fund balance citywide will be reduced by this same twenty-six million dollars. Again, this, putting this information within the footnotes is not new. We have been doing that all along. The language and the way that it's being disclosed did change and has been updated. This is information that the rating authorities and rating agencies have always looked at and used when they assess our, our credit risk. But again, it's, it's, it's a very large number and it's a change that's going to happen. So we just want to make sure that we're doing our best to help educate everything, everybody. GASB is by no means easy to read or easy to understand for a lot of people. It's a very technical type of language.
Well, if we have a strong net position now, I think you used that word, then, and we've been keeping up pretty well with, with our required payments.
Yes, we have.
So our position ought to be as good or better than most local or municipalities.
Right, well, the way I think of it is all governments are going to have to implement.
So everybody's going to have to do that, it's all relative.
Fully funded pension plan.
Right, and that's, so I'm thinking relative, we should.
Relative to other governments, you know, it's going to look the same for the most part. And it's just, it's an accounting treatment, it's not like the liabilities have really changed with the, with the entity.
How does it affect the budgeting process, or does it, it's just something?
It will not necessarily impact the budgeting process because in the budgeting process, we're not necessarily showing up buying citywide balance sheet. Because this, this will be a balance sheet item, liability, fund balance. And we don't have that information necessarily at that level within the, the overall budget directly. Now indirectly, it, it, again, this is a measure, this is something that the rating authority and the rating agencies look at. So we just want to keep in mind when they, Standard and Poor's is a very good example. They sent us a letter in June, and within there, in that memo, when they upgraded us, they listed that this unfunded liability that we have would be considered a negative credit impact. However, it was offset by the fact that we are funding one hundred percent of what is required. So as long as we continue within our budget to fund one hundred percent, we're good. And that's where it impacts on the budget.
And the actuary would still tell, would tell you what, what would your, they're, they're getting rayed from that word, but, you know, how much would you need to fund annually for this to be fully funded? And that could still be your mechanism for budgeting and determining how much to put in the plan annually. And the rating authorities would look at that appropriately.
GASB has consistently afforded the opportunity to bet your assets against your pension liability.
What's going to happen this year is that net, that net pension liability will now be a liability on the entity-wide statements where that was not the case previously.
So like on page sixty-seven where we show our pension li-
Yeah, I see it.
Our total pension liability is forty-five million. But within the pension, our, our pension has assets at eighteen point eight. So then our liability would be the twenty-six that we would reflect in the liability.
Define assets by?
The total value, the total market value in our pension plan.
It's the pension assets that are disclosed on page twenty-seven. So the actuary was going to, the actuary will provide the total pension liability figure.
I guess I'm just trying to figure how you're defining assets.
Right, so it's the net position held in trust as of year end.
This specific eighteen point eight million is the amount of assets we have in our local state police and fire pension. This does not represent any assets that we have within Maryland state retirement system because they have not provided that type of detailed information to us.
I was thinking assets in terms of physical ownership of the city.
No, assets in the plan.
Like a business where you liquefy and, you know, all of a sudden you've got that portion. So there, I was confused, that term was confused. I understand now, thank you.
This is a good moment to remind everybody, as we discussed last spring, if we fund our pension liabilities in total, if we fund, if we keep the current surplus, we can't come close to meeting our current expenditure level next year without a big increase in taxes. So the equation, to me, has to concern all these components and for a two-year period, or else we'll have to do a major restructuring of government because we can't make it work. You can't make the equation work unless we take from some of these areas. Just make that pessimistic.
Thanks for that dose of reality, Councilor.
I know, but.
My, my, just my final point, and Rena has that slide up here, and then I'll turn everything over to Chris. But again, on this pension liability that's going to be recorded in the citywide financials, it's going to include this twenty-six million dollars that is our local police and fire pension. The state of Maryland will provide to us our number, our allocated share of the statewide unfunded liability for pension as well. I do not have an, an idea of what that number is going to look like. So it's going to be twenty-six million plus that for us.
I could speak a little bit to it. What, what the state will probably do in the spring is basically, they'll look at historically what the city has funded as their ARC, I mean, funded as their contribution compared to the contribution from all the participants. So let's say the city funds a million out of a billion-dollar total contribution into the plan annually. If that's, you know, point one percent or point oh one percent, they'll apply that to the total unfunded liability of the state pension system. And then that basically allocate, allocate that number out to all the participants.
And one of the things, our fiscal year fourteen, with Maryland state retirement, just like police and fire pension, we have consistently contributed one hundred percent of the funding level that they have requested. So in fiscal year fourteen, that number was one point four million dollars. And then just, just last is this whole concept of the GASB and these unfunded liabilities. We have one more to go, and that will be OPEB or other post-employment benefits. That number is well, not in fifteen, but in the year following or the next year.
Sixteen or seventeen. Basically, GASB is going to do the same thing for OPEB that they did for pension. So basically, the pension standards that they released, they'll cross out the word pension and write OPEB in it. And then basically, the same requirements will apply for OPEB.
That, that's another part of the equation, by the way, OPEB, I just don't want to seem to be too negative.
Well, and so at the end of 2014, we had twenty-nine point seven million is an unfunded liability. And the, the, the good part with OPEB is that we, at this point, are actually overfunded. So we are overfunded by six hundred and twenty thousand. That just means what number that they have decided our funding level needs to be cumulative in total in all the years that we've had OPEB, we have funded in excess. So we have funded a hundred percent, beyond a hundred percent. But again, even with that additional funding, our unfunded total liability is twenty-nine point seven at the end of fourteen.
Right, but we've just taken that excess.
Just make a comment, it seems to me that GASB has created a lot of work, a lot of heartache for, for people, and essentially has come to nothing. As long as local governments and other governments were willing to fund their, their retirement systems, they're going to go on forever, or at least we hope they are, and they're probably not going to give away their taxing power. So this really has been a lot of work that was really unnecessary, I think.
I will not disagree with you there.
Thank you.
And I'm just going to leave this final screen up briefly while Chris covers the actual audit, just for, so that the viewers at home can actually see just a couple of those big ticket number, the general fund that we discussed, the fund balance. They can see budget versus actual for fiscal year fourteen. Again, we ended the year, general fund, fund balance, nine point nine million, eight point one of that is in unassigned. And with that, Chris, do you want to tell them how wonderful we are, what a great job we did?
In your materials, you should have a packet that says, "Presentation to Those Charged with Governance," towards the bottom of it. I'll walk through this high level, if you have any questions, please feel free to stop me. You turn to page three, you'll see the, the scope of the services we were engaged to complete. We've completed the audit of the June thirty, 2014 financial statements or comprehensive annual financial report. We will be completing a OMB circular A133 audit, which will be a compliance audit of federal awards. We've reviewed the uniform financial report, which is required to be filed with the state upon completion of the financial statements. As part of the single audit, we will also review the data collection form that's fed, that's filed with the federal government, as well as where a year, we're available for year-round consultation. So as, as Michelle or Rena has questions during the year, you know, we always feel free, it's more beneficial for them to bring it to our attention as those things occur, rather than at the end of the year and have to unravel a transaction that may have been, you know, recorded incorrectly or what have you, so. Page four highlights the summary of the audit results. We've issued an unmodified or a clean opinion on the financial statements. It's the best opinion we can give under auditing standards. We've discovered no instances of fraud. We've discovered no material weakness in the internal controls. We've received full cooperation from Michelle, Rena, and her staff. And we've had no audit journal entries through the process, which means the information that management's been recording has been, you know, accurate. And, you know, if you're getting numbers throughout the year, that those would be reliable. If you turn to page six is just a chart of our audit approach, and really, we take a risk-based audit approach. And what that entails is talking to Michelle and Rena before the audit about any changes in processes, any unique transactions, you know, if you look at what's happening with GASB and the accounting industry, you know, significant changes there, it almost seems annually. So just factoring all those things in and planning our specific audit procedures around, you know, what's, what's occurring or where's the greatest risk of misstatement that could lie within those financial statements. Page seven and also on page eight, we, we look at the control environment as a part of our audit. And what that entails is, you know, looking at management's competence, looking at ethics and how they are setting an example for those in the, those that have an impact on the financial reporting processes. What's the information and communication that's being shared between the departments and helping Michelle and Rena get to reporting and financial statement numbers? In all of those cases, our assessment was, these areas were effective. On page nine starts our evaluation of key processes. So if you look to the left here, we look at treasury and bank reconciliations and investment reconciliations. If you look at estimation for depreciation or any allowance on receivables, the financial reporting process and closing the books, the expenditure process and approvals and coding those to the correct accounts. In all those instances, we assess that these processes were both designed and operating effectively. As well on the next page, the payroll process, revenue, fixed assets, and compliance. As well as on the following page, looking at the information technology environment and grant compliance. Page twelve, we, we talked about already, if you look at GASB sixty-seven, that's been implemented and disclosed within the footnotes. GASB sixty-eight will be implemented by the city in June of thirtieth of 2015. And then, of course, once all the dust settles from that, OPEB will be right around the corner. Page fourteen shows the results, page fourteen and fifteen, but since Michelle had walked through the numbers, I wasn't going to walk through financial statement numbers. If you look on page seventeen, from this page on is our firm required communications or, and industry required communications, and this will be our opportunity. You know, although we issued an unmodified opinion, had we had problems getting through the audit, had we had, you know, difficulties getting information, disagreements with management, a number of journal entries or anything that we would need to bring to your attention, although we issued an unmodified opinion, this would be our opportunity to do that. But we have nothing of a negative nature we would be required to disclose to you through the audit process. You know, we go through a process to look at the accounting policies, to make sure those are reasonable and not overly aggressive. We go through a process to make sure that we had, that we're independent of the city, and we are independent, so. Again, just nothing that we would have to bring to your attention as a, as a negative item within the required communications. And then I've included our contact information on page twenty-three. So if anytime during the year, if you have any concerns that you'd want to contact us directly, we're always open for that. And of course, there's no additional charge for reaching out to us or, you know, if you guys want to meet or have any concerns that, that we should be aware of.
Is there any questions? Anything else?
I think the main implication here is that our fiscal whiz kids did a good job, did a great job. Would that, would you agree with that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I wonder if I could ask one question?
Please.
When we do this again next year, this stuff, at least for me, is very complicated. I'm not used to reading these sorts of things. So when the background is so dark that you can't see the other colors, the black, it's really difficult to read.
Okay.
So perhaps next year, the background could be a little lighter and the black designations would show better. If you can do that.
Sure.
Thank you.
I'd just like to compliment Michelle and Rena because we've got solid operations throughout the fiscal year, but we're also getting our CAFER, our audit, our financial reports done in a timely basis that allows us to move on to the budget, knowing how we finish the year, and also getting things done in a way that reinforces the solid accounting that's occurring during the year. So the timeliness of this is much appreciated.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
All right, next we have our preliminary agenda review. So you will take that out, we'll take a minute to go through that. So next week, Mr. Alshire has the invocation, just a friendly reminder. We'll go over our schedule, January, we'll have a work session on the sixth, the thirteenth, and the twentieth at four o'clock, and then our regular session on the twenty-seventh of January. On the consent agenda, we have the topic we'll be discussing later tonight, the request for the use of Fairgrounds Park, Department of Public Works. Any questions on the vehicle replacement and salt purchase? Okay.
Just came in, it's a, it's a big jump, but not as bad as it could have been in terms of the price on salt. So Eric deserves a lot of credit on working hard on that.
Thanks, Eric. Nice beard, by the way. So any- So any questions on Public Works items on the consent agenda? Parks and Rec's approval of the pavement, and engineering, the approval of the pavement preservation list that we've already discussed? Any questions about that? Utilities, we have wastewater polymer system replacement and wastewater pump replacement. Any questions on those? And then police, we have two canine items. Any questions on those?
I'm just curious about how long the dog investment usually lasts. Do we have a, I don't want to trip you.
About seven years.
Seven years. Okay.
About the life of a German shepherd.
Yeah, well, it's an interesting cost, you know, interesting.
And that comes with training.
I was going to say, it includes training, and I think it's key for people to realize that.
All right, unfinished business, we'll be approving the ordinance to accept the transfer of the land for Terrapin Park. And under new business, we have removal of the donation, unattended donation drop boxes, introducing that ordinance. We'll be introducing the amendment to Chapter 216 Streets, the approval of the resolution about state agencies, which we'll be talking about later tonight, the approval of a grant agreement with the Maryland Bike Ways Grant for the design of Marsh Run Trail, the approval of the debt management policy, the goals and priorities, and the community coalition funding. Any questions about those items? Okay, moving right along to Catalyst Project Number Three, a request for a statement of interest for the developer partner for the USMH student housing project. So we have staff coming up with special guest Mark Halsey.
Thank you. We appreciate your support. As background, this is Catalyst Project Number Three as part of the city center plan. And as overall goals for that Catalyst Project is to support the university system of Maryland at Hagerstown in their expansion, looking at support of growth of students from the current level of 500 to 750 students, and to support new housing opportunities in the private sector for student housing. Over the 10-year period, the recommendations from Urban Partners calls for three projects creating 12 units of housing and accommodating 24 students. We're here tonight to talk about a segment of that, which is an initial model project that would support four units and eight students. Just to give you a quick overview and a summary in your memo of the details, in the proposed request for a statement of interest, what we're looking to do is identify a partner developer to work with the university system as well as the city for this model project of housing units. This would be a three-way partnership, the city, the private developer, and the university system. We'd be looking at a single property initially. The university system would market the units to the students and provide the names of interested students to the developer for leasing arrangements. The city would provide an incentive package using a variety of our incentive programs, including the first third grant program, of which the mayor and city council had reserved $250,000 toward this project. And it requires ground-level commercial use as a condition of that first third grant program. Also, the city has an application in for the community legacy grant, so subject to a grant award that program could be utilized. The Partners in Economic Progress incentive would provide a real estate grant back for the first five years of the project, and there are additional incentives, including waivers of fees, fast-tracking, EDU benefits, and parking under the Partners in Economic Progress program. Part of the arrangement calls for the city to provide a rent guarantee agreement with USMH for the four units for a five-year period. The maximum financial exposure to the city based on worst-case scenario of $850 rent with zero occupancy is $20,400 per year for the five-year period. And there is an opportunity for continuation of the arrangement between USMH and the developer partner, as long as all the parties remain satisfied beyond the five years after the expiration of the rent guarantee. I'm going to turn it over to Kathy to run through the project guidelines and the timeline.
Sure. The first thing I want to talk about is the project development guidelines, how we expect the project to develop, first being that the initial project must be a property located within the designated two-block area around USMH as it's displayed on the attached map. The map, which is the last page, it's basically two blocks out from the square on Potomac and Washington Street. And I did some analysis of this today, and within that area, there are 52 mixed-use buildings, which would be a requirement if you were going to be the, use the first third grant money, plus a whole host of other commercial buildings that have vacant upper floors that could be converted to residential that would then be eligible for the program. So there are definitely plenty of properties in this area where there would be, people would be eligible for this program. The project must provide a minimum of four units with two bedrooms and two bathrooms so that students could share and help with the rent, and a target size of 1,000 square feet. If the developer wants to provide more than four, that's fine, that's great, but the rent guarantee is for four units. The units need to be renovated to PEP standards, like Jill mentioned, the project. And then I spoke with someone who has a lot of experience managing student housing to find out what were our recommended security features. And so what we're suggesting is it must include exterior door locks, dusted dawn lighting, and a security camera for each exterior door, secured vestibule mailbox area. That's, you know, usually you come in one door, and then there's a second door, make sure that both doors are locked, and then intercom and door release systems for each unit, so that if someone is trying to, wants to visit you, instead of standing in the street and shouting up to the windows, which is what often happens downtown, you would have an intercom system like you have in bigger cities, where someone presses a button, "I want to, I want to talk to unit one," and the unit one person can talk with you and release the door. So it just provides for a better security system, rather than just leaving the front door unlocked, as often happens downtown, because people don't want to have to be running up and down to let their company in. Then also designated off-street parking for each unit is desired, preferably on the same property, if the, if the property owner can provide that they have space for it, and then the preferred rent range running from $780 to $850 per month per unit. We, through Urban Partners' analysis of this project, they found that that would seem like a feasible rent and affordable for two to four students, depending if they double up, and based on their analysis of the potential performer for a project like this. The selection process, again, we conferred with Urban Partners on a recommended way to go about finding a developer partner, and they recommended that we do a two-step process. The first step is developers would submit a statement of interest, and in that statement, it would be, it would identify them, who they are, who their partners are, identify the property that they're proposing to be part of the program, when they expect they could deliver the units for all of these standards, and their financial capability to do a project like this. The second step would be, after they were shortlisted, if we short, say we got, you know, 30 of these, we shortlisted it down to the ones that we thought that were the most appropriate for the project, they would submit a full proposal, and that would be the development plan, cost estimates to do the particular project, the budget, so we could get a sense of how much first third they might need, whether the community legacy money was in play, so we can see what financially would be involved with each project. Then the criteria for reviewing them all is for the statement of interest, in particular, we're considering the experience of the developer in residential development, particularly renovation and adaptive reuse of existing buildings, not just building new things out on a cornfield, but actually working with an old building to renovate it, experience with residential property management, because the city and the university are not going to manage this, the property owner's going to manage it. Then the quality of the proposed development plan, which is more, would be more reviewed in the second step of this process, the ability to deliver the product in a timely manner, and the financial capability to complete the development, financial capability to complete development of this type and scale. For the full proposal, the mainly criteria there is, again, it's the experience that we mentioned for the statement of interest, but also the quality of the plan becomes important, and that, at that, at that stage, as well as the cost effectiveness of the project, so we can see, some people's abilities may be more affordable, they may need less city incentive, so the cost effectiveness becomes important. The tentative schedule that we've outlined for you in the memo, although if we can compress it, we will, is that have mayor and council authorize staff on the December 16th to post the request for statements of interest. Staff would get it posted hopefully by the 19th or so. Deadline for submittals would be just January 9th. We would, staff would update the mayor and council on mid-January. Staff would review, oh, thank you, Donna. Staff would, just take a break. Okay. Staff would review the proposals for shortlisted candidates in mid-January. The deadline for proposals from the, the full proposal from the shortlisted candidates would be February 15th. Staff presentation to the mayor and council of recommended candidates in late February. Of course, all along, the university also is going to be reviewing, it's not just the city. And then the mayor and city council authorize the partnership agreement negotiation with a selected candidate in late February, again, provided we have concurrence from the university. And then mayor and council approve the partnership agreement with a selected developer partner in March. Again, if we can compress this, we will, but this seemed like, as we were trying to figure out how all these steps would work, what might be a timeframe.
Pretty aggressive timeframe.
We have a draft motion, as you just did the preliminary agenda review, this, if you're in support of this this evening, would need to be added to the agenda.
Mr. Brubaker and then Mr. Munson.
Two items of my concern. One is, and I don't know how to write it, but it's ensuring that there's an adequate level of maintenance over the long term. We're putting a lot of subsidies into these projects, and I'm afraid you'll start off with very good or hopefully excellent, and it's very easy to get on that trail down to shabby and still charge the same rents and get away with it, you know? And then all of a sudden, we're faced with deteriorated properties that somebody's trying to flip, just a not-good situation. So I didn't see anything, there might be something in here, I looked at it several times and didn't see a maintenance clause in there, and how that might be written, I'm not sure. Maybe the developer could help do that. But I think there needs, and it's beyond code enforcement. It needs to be beyond simple code, because we're putting these subsidies in. It seems to me that entitles us to do that, because we're providing these subsidies upfront.
We would agree.
You know, so I think there needs to be language either for the developer to create or guidelines for us to give him, here's what we'd like, you know? My second concern, and that was a curve like this, I'm afraid rents might go like that, unless there's some way of controlling them. Again, we're putting a lot of money upfront, and it seems to me, I'm not against reasonable increases when they're justified, I'm not against somebody making money. I am against somebody sort of freeloaded on the subsidies. So I, you know, there, it seems to me there needs to be way, to make sure we keep the rent range in front of the intended, or available to the intended audience. And I, again, I didn't see that there.
And some of the details would be in a developer agreement. Some of these documents refer to that, and so the, these comments could be incorporated into a later document.
Well, well, we had development guidelines, I guess I'd like to see them, at least in there and what's given to the developer.
We do have in the RFSI where we, we lay out what we expect would be in a development agreement, and one of them is a specific maintenance plan by the developer.
Okay. And that's, they're a little bit different between the public spaces and in the units, but, but I'm talking about both.
Mr. Munson.
I have a concern about maintenance, too, and it comes from a little different direction. First, I like this idea, we're going to bring some new people downtown, we're going to bring some energy downtown. For, let me ask you this question. The, all the subsidy comes from the city of Hagerstown, correct? None of it comes from the university system?
No, the rent agreement would be the city and the university.
And the rent guarantee would be split 50% between the university system and the city.
It would be. Okay. So the university system's putting money up, too? Okay. That's good. Suppose you have somebody that's running a place that really trashes it. That's going to cost us, that's going to cost us more, and it's going to cost the university more, too. It seems to me that if that's the circumstance, then, then the people who live there have, and their parents have some responsibility.
The security.
So that, I think that needs to be looked at. Also, if a kid drops out of school in the middle of the semester, I think that has a potential for increasing costs for everybody, especially if he doesn't tell the university he or she, unless, unless it's paid upfront, the rent's paid upfront. That could be a problem as well. And I hesitate to bring this particular issue up, but everybody knows, especially Penny, that we have a problem with bedbugs in the city of Hagerstown, and that's a terrible issue, and if it should come to one of these units, then it's got to be taken care of effectively immediately. So that's an issue that's going to have to be a serious part of the maintenance agreement. I think you all have done a really good job of thinking this through and trying to, trying to make, bring some new life into downtown Hagerstown, and hopefully push some of the old life out.
So the action you're requesting tonight is to proceed with the RFSI, correct? And I don't hear any opposition to it, so I'm assuming that there's support. I know Councilman Alshire said he supports it. I do want to thank you, too. This is a, an ongoing project to implement all of these catalyst projects. I think staff has done a great job of keeping these balls up in the air and keeping things moving forward, so thank you for that. Mr. Liston?
I can just recognize Mr. Mark Halsey. Staff have been meeting with, with him, working on this project. This is an exciting partnership with the university system and the city. They're, they're seeking to put up real dollars right alongside ours, alongside a private developer as well. So I just wanted to recognize.
Yes, thank you, Mark, and USMH.
And I want to thank him, too, Mayor. It would have been really easy for you to sit in the background and not worry about this and say, "Hagerstown, this is your problem," but you didn't. You stepped forward and you brought resources to it, and because of that, it's going to be, downtown's going to be a better place, and we thank you for that.
Mr. Brubaker.
Hate to be a thorn, but I just want to be clear, where in the process the concerns you just heard get, get incorporated? They're not in the RFSI that the developer will see. Where, where will those concerns get incorporated?
They're briefly mentioned in the RFSI, but then the details of how the project will be developed would be in the development agreement, that would be struck between the city, university, and the developer. And then there's a second agreement that's struck between the three, which is the rent agreement.
But can he say, there's all these bullets in the guidelines, but those things we mentioned aren't mentioned? Can he say?
It's mentioned over here.
Well, okay. Maintenance services, so that's a strong enough clause.
We'll make sure that it is in the development agreement.
Thank you.
We'll have a motion on for next Tuesday's regular session.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Good job.
Next is another important topic for economic development downtown and all around the city, and that's broadband. Mr. Nicewoner.
Thank you, Mayor.
Tell us the good news.
Well, in the instance, Tom, I had a PowerPoint, but I'll forego that and just get right to it.
Thank you.
Because I know it's, it's been a long day. The ability to provide high-speed broadband in, in the urban core, the city center area has been of interest for a long time with, with staff. That, that interest was piqued when the state of Maryland developed the One Maryland Broadband Project with, with, with the Recovery Act money and presented that to us, I believe it was November of 2012. One of the pieces of that project was to provide fiber optic cable. One of the pieces of that project was to provide fiber optic cables that would be used for economic development capabilities that would run straight through our city center area, basically right down Washington Street. We would be able to take some strands of that fiber and make those available to, for commercial businesses that would have fiber directly to their premise. We already have fiber, municipal fiber, that we operate through between our city buildings, also Board of Education. The county government also uses fiber that's managed in conjunction with the Washington County Public Network. That fiber, though, unfortunately, is not able to be used for economic development purposes because of, because the service provider for that is the Enick Pratt Library. And they have E-rate concerns, and we get that internet service for free. So therefore, we cannot basically provide it to commercial entities as a free service. With the university system of Maryland, they also have fiber that runs through town that goes and serves purposes, obviously, for their institutional needs through the Network Maryland Project. That fiber also is not able to be utilized for economic development purposes. So when we were made aware of the One Maryland Broadband Project, the capability of providing fiber for commercial activities was a huge deal for us. To that end, the county commissioned a study that was done by Design 9. Andrew Coehill was here in September of last year and presented those findings to you. It was a needs assessment and an executive recommendation on how we would use that fiber and with the hope that One Maryland would be able to provide us that economic development capability. Currently, unfortunately, we have no idea between the county and the city what the status is of the implementation of One Maryland Broadband. We know that there is cable somewhere in downtown. We have the inclination that it's tied up in a loop behind the University of Maryland Center. We had One Maryland, the company that is managing that piece of the puzzle for the state, Maryland Broadband Co-op. We had a representative here, we showed him around downtown, they were extremely excited that they could get some interest drummed up between their co-op members, and we heard nothing more. We were provided a contact, a recent contact, Maryland Broadband, had a meeting scheduled with them. They did not respond to us after repeated attempts at that. Regardless of all that, we have also been working on a plan that would establish, based upon one of the recommendations of the study that was done by Design 9, to look at public-private partnership that would come in here and work with the city and provide fiber-to-the-premise capabilities, not only to the city center area, but potentially other types of collateral access to high-speed internet in the city. Everything that we've seen with urban partners, with the catalyst projects, with urban partners, as well as any other external economic development that we have, is going to require some sort of high-speed internet access. If we're going to be able to attract businesses such as, and retain businesses such as HighRock, DaVinci, other companies that are going to bring in high-paying jobs into this area, high-speed internet is going to be, is going to be a necessity for them. Right now, that ability is limited to be able to provide that. So therefore, over the last year, two years, actually, we've done a lot of work in talking with other cities that have done this kind of thing, talking to the industry itself, going to two conferences that were specifically based on municipal broadband. And we're at the point now where I am looking for your support to put out a request for information that would satisfy five goals that I've identified. And again, these are the ones that I've identified, they could be modified, and they're part of your memo. The first goal would be to create an open access, 1 gigabit or greater fiber network in a targeted commercial corridor known as city center Hagerstown to foster innovation, drive job creation, stimulate economic growth. That would be the first goal. To be clear, we are not looking to get into the internet business. We are not looking to be a service provider. Initially, we're not even looking to put out any money for this. This would be a partnership where our side of the partnership would be the in-kind services. One of the things I've heard from several different companies and several cities have said to me that they're envious of us is that we have an electric utility, which means we have control over the majority of poles that would be utilized. That's one of the biggest headaches, is trying to work with private utility companies to get right-ofways, to get fiber right. The service, we're looking to service to be offered at a discount to what is currently available. What is currently available is running about, you know, $180, $200 a month for what would be about a tenth of the service that broadband, that fiber access would provide. So we would want to be able to not, we want everybody to be able to afford, the mom-and-pop customer all the way up to a corporate, you know, to a fairly large-sized corporate entity to be able to afford this high-speed broadband for their needs. Again, urban partners, whether it be the attraction of business downtown, what you just heard on student housing, the ability to potentially provide fiber connectivity for the students in their dorm rooms, which the majority of colleges these days already have that to their dorms, is going to be crucial in being able to aid in the success of being able to do these catalyst projects. As part of the needs assessment, there was a pro forma done for the city center area. It was projected by the consultant that the cost would range between $100,000 and $180,000. The majority of those costs involved poles, you know, stringing poles, digging trenches, running conduit. A lot of that's already done. So my guess would be that that's going to be on the low end of the hundred, towards $100,000 to do this project. Again, we would want anyone that would respond to this RFI to provide that information back to us. The second goal would be to establish free wireless networks in parks and public spaces across the city with the primary initial focus on City Park, Pangborn Park, Wheaton Park, Helane Park, and Fairgrounds Park. Those are the major parks that are in each area of the city. We would ask that a company that we would partner with would be able to take spurs off of their main fiber backbone that would come through town and be able to light up each of these parks with free access. Many of the municipalities I spoke to find that park visitations have increased when those visitors are able to take their tablet into the park, are able to sit while their kids are playing, read a book, watch a movie, those kind of things. So that would be, to me, that would be more of the quality-of-life aspect of this project would be wireless access to parks.
You just gave a lot of reasons not to put it in parks.
Yeah, yeah. The third goal would be to evaluate, for a respondent, to evaluate the opportunity to expand wired or wireless services, and/or wireless services, to areas beyond the city center urban core to include underserved residential areas, business parks, or other targeted commercial areas. I've gotten inquiries from a couple other larger businesses that are outside of our urban core as to the availability of broadband that are currently now using basically telecom circuits to do their business, that would be extremely interested in getting access to gigabit services, whether as an enticement to where they are now or whether we could perhaps migrate them into town. But this would be, this would be another goal. This would be to be able to expand upon the links that would be created through the network and get them branched out into other areas of town. Once you build the foundation, building the spurs becomes a little bit more economical. But we have to be able to get some sort of a return on investment for the partner that we cross enough, we pass enough potential customers that it makes it, you know, worth what their investment's going to be. The fourth goal would be to establish a presence for the partner within the community in the form of a co-location facility and/or a business office branch in which to conduct business. One thing I would like to stay away from is any company that would partner for us to be faceless. I would like them to have some sort of an input in the community. I'd like them to have a presence in the community so if someone wanted to go into their office and have some sort of a customer service need, equipment swap, something like that, that there would be an office within city center or within the city center area that they could go to. That's kind of an offshoot from our broadband overpower lines project 10 years ago where we wanted to establish that type of a face, where you could actually speak to somebody in person if you wanted to. Many of the municipalities that are doing municipal broadband now have that and are more than willing to establish that presence. The final goal would be to provide connectivity options for existing, for our existing city camera surveillance systems, including expansion into other developing areas of the city. Right now, our camera surveillance systems operate off wireless or some, or a form of cellular technology, which makes the ability to do streaming video difficult, especially streaming live but also on playback. We would ask that in these areas where there is fiber that is run, that we are able to take some strands of that fiber and use them for our camera surveillance systems so we can get them off the wireless, get them onto fiber, where we can actually do some real streaming live monitoring.
Increase the number of cameras, right?
At that point in time, there is no bandwidth issue. So yes, you could expand. You could expand exponentially. What I'd like to do with your support would be to get this RFI out within the next week or two. I've been able to talk with one of the industry publications that's willing to provide me a mailing list that we could, that I could send this out to. The interest I've received, most recently at the Broadband Communities Conference in Massachusetts, was extremely positive. There are several other municipalities doing the same, working through the same processes as we are. They all recommend go the RFI route first. Don't put forth any type of specifications. Let these companies respond back to us, learn what we're trying to do here, and then take their recommendations based on RFP off of that. I think this, and again, we're not trying to get into the internet business. But what we want to do, and what I think is crucial for continued development of opportunity here, is to be able to provide that high-end access, or that high-speed broadband access to companies that either can't get it or can't afford it.
Not only that, but just the amount of people who might be able to telecommute and maybe only go down the road to, you know, to the metro areas one or two days a week as opposed to five days a week and be able to send large amounts of data back and forth is crucial to that aspect of what we're trying to do. Mr. Brubaker.
Well, once again, my question is, we help this, we expedite it, put some of our resources in kind, let's say, into it. And how do we control, but one of our objectives is to keep this reasonably priced, so businesses want to locate here. So how do we keep a lid on that? How do we keep a lid on rates? I'm not against somebody making money, but, you know, sometimes the expectations are up here when we want businesses to be able to pay down here. And unless we have some means to attain that.
Right.
We could build something that we don't want.
Well, exactly.
Especially when you have a monopoly.
Well, exactly. And that's one of the motivations behind doing this RFI, is to get that feedback. What would be particular, a particular part, potential partner's rate structure? How many premises would they have to pass to get a return on investment that works for them? For some, it might be 10. For some, it might, they might say, "I need 100 potential customers to be able to hook up." We don't know that we could do that. But through their responses to the RFI, we would be better able to gauge, first, what are they going to have to put out infrastructure-wise? Two, what is the value of what we can provide them to their investment? And three, how many customers are they going to have? Again, this can't be a build-it-and-they-will-come type of an issue. We have to have that, we have to have that market here. And we certainly have the real estate available for it, for these, for companies that would use this. The technology is certainly out there, as the mayor has said, where the ability to stream video or the ability to carry on a conference, even conference calls, is necessary. But a company is not going to respond to this RFI, or it's not going to be even worth putting out an RFP to actually begin the project if there's no company here that feels there's a dense enough return on investment for that. So basically, I don't know.
Right. But I also want to avoid a bait and switch.
Absolutely.
No bait and switches.
Absolutely. And that's why we do this, that's why we do this first.
Scott, I think, well, first, let me say thank you for bringing this in front of us. I think this concept that you presented is a home run, because I think this creates a real possibility that new jobs, technology jobs, will be brought into the city of Hagerstown, specifically downtown. And so, thank you.
Thank you. I want to just reiterate my thanks, too, because I know Scott's been going to these conferences, talking with lots of other municipalities and people in the industry, and trying to keep this ball moving forward, even though these supposed partners of ours have not kept up their end of the ball rolling. So thank you for your work on this.
So if you're okay with summarizing the other RFI, we'll put this on for next Tuesday for you to vote on.
Sounds like a plan. Thank you very much. Next up is the 200th Anniversary Parade for the First Hagerstown Hose Company. Welcome, everybody.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Hello.
We are here, we had a request to help out with the 200th Anniversary Parade for the First Hagerstown Hose Company. And first of all, they're requesting to do the parade on October 3rd at 1:00 PM. And if approved, we would work with the staff to ensure everybody's safety along the route. We would ask our friends at the fire company to let the people along the path know that it's occurring. And then also, they're going to be celebrating even more at the fairgrounds by doing games afterwards, and they're already working with these individuals. So with that, I want to turn it over to representatives of the First Hagerstown Hose Company on this great anniversary milestone event. There's not many times we go with a 200th anniversary. So if you want to introduce yourselves and talk about your...
My name is Warren Royce. I'm the volunteer captain at the First Hose Company. We come up with this idea many years ago, I believe, and Chief Dietrich can correct me if I'm wrong. We had fire prevention parades through Hagerstown. I remember when I was a kid, standing along the street watching them. And I think they were ended in late 80s, I believe it was.
It was in the 80s, yeah.
And we kind of felt that for 200 years, that would be something that we'd like to bring back, just as a one-time type deal for our anniversary. We have also discussed and put together plans for what we call a fireman's muster, which back in the days of the early fire companies, they got together and held competitions, bucket brigades, trying to do ladder raises. We do midnight alarms, we do quick dress, just different types of competitions that fire companies and the firemen compete back and forth together with. I've spoken with some other individuals from Funkstown Fire Company and some others that have some events that the children can do that day as well. They have the dress-up costumes, they can be a fireman and... They have the dress-up costumes, they can be a fireman and spray a bowling pin off of a stand that gives the kids something to do. We had also had wanted to do like some sort of food vending or something that day for the public to come in. Our, one of our other stations out on Eastern Boulevard at Engine 3, they like to do chicken barbecues. We were gonna try and incorporate them into that event with us as well. Try and get everybody that's city fire department involved in one event to help us celebrate our anniversary. The area we had discussed was the side area of Fairgrounds Park where the soccer fields would be. I know that's where they usually hold a national night out and so forth. That area there is kind of just about right for what we would need to do for our events that we would have scheduled for that day.
And they're already working with the Parks and Rec staff on that, so we were looking for approval on the parade portion of it so that they can move forward with their plans in 2015. We would work with auxiliary police and police if there is any overtime, I can build that into the 2015 budget.
It sounds like a great idea. Any objections?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. You have guys taking one of those old fire trucks carrying, you know...
We've got one.
Down the street.
We gotta ask him to let it out the door, though.
You have one. You gotta have guys running down the street with it.
Are you volunteering, Councilmember Brubaker?
No, I'm not. I'm volunteering them.
My name's Ray Lushwell. I'm secretary of the company, and I'll be celebrating my 40th year with the company. We're celebrating our 200th. But we do have one of the hand-drawn pieces of equipment. It's in our soon-to-be museum right next to the station at 30, 31 South Potomac, but I don't think it would hold up because it's all original, it's never been redone.
Right.
And the ghost that resides within our buildings, I don't think they'd let it out. So it, and along with what Captain Roy said, we would have some vendors and we'd also make sure they had the proper insurance and everything in case something happened that it wouldn't fall back on us or fall back on the city.
Yeah, Karen has a list of the rules for the fairgrounds.
Well, he's working with Parks and Recs on that portion, but the...
Well, you and Rodney have that, yeah.
And then also, they give us a certificate and insurance for the parade.
Sounds like a great idea and looking forward to seeing it all come together. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
You bet. Next up is the Police Athletic League Country Music Festival 2015. Come on up.
Thank you. Thank you much.
The Police Athletic League have talked to both Rodney and myself regarding an event that they would like to do at Fairgrounds Park in September of 2015. And this is a country music festival. They talked to me primarily on how we do our events, how we outline it and what we do. We talked about many venues and I'll have them talk to you about how they came up with having this at Fairgrounds Park. There are some guidelines that would be required and we listed those in our memo because we want to ensure the Fairgrounds Park stays as wonderful as it is. And then also, there's liability issues. Really, the pending questions, I guess, would be two questions on this. One is, can they do a country music festival at Fairgrounds Park? And if they can do a country music festival at Fairgrounds Park, would it be approved to have alcohol at this event because they would like to sell beer and wine? So with that, I'll let them talk and really, those are, I would believe, the two main questions. They are asking to be a partner with the city. We haven't quantified the services. We haven't sat with them and did a listing of what that partnership would be. That would be something that would take a little bit of time. So really, is number one, is can they do this? And if they can do this, can they have alcohol there? Okay, with that, would you like to come up too? Okay.
Mayor and Council, first, I just want to thank you for taking the time to listen to us about this fundraising idea we have for a country fest at the Fairgrounds Park. We came up with this idea a couple months ago to benefit the Police Athletic League and the city of Hagerstown through tourism and community development. We feel that we can put together a festival that would create excitement and buzz in our own community as well as promote the city outwardly. As you know, the city of Hagerstown has partnered with the Police Athletic League for the past 16 years. We currently serve 100 kids every month at the PAL, and we offer programs including the after-school program, our karate program, the wrestling program, outdoor programs like our obstacle course, and we're continuing to develop those and plan on expanding those as much as we can. In 2013, just to give you guys an idea, of course, you know, we re, we kind of restructured two years ago. We've got a new board, very active, very vigilant on trying to raise funds. In 2013, we raised $80,000 for the programs at the Police Athletic League. That was a milestone year for us. Over that year and the year before, we put $50,000 into the fairgrounds grandstands and we developed a new wrestling room area as well as upgraded the facility that we were in. So that kind of gives you an idea of what we're spending the money on, the programs and the building out there, putting the money into the fairgrounds. There's two main reasons why we're looking to partner with the city and have this event at the Fairgrounds Park. The first one is to draw people into the city and to highlight one of the city gems, which is the Fairgrounds Park. We love it. We love being out there. We think it's an awesome facility and really is one of our best features here at the city. The other one, of course, is to raise funds for our organization to put back into that community. That's the core group of kids that we, that our programs affect as well as to continue to develop the facilities out there at the fairgrounds. With doing that and putting this plan together, we understand the importance of a partnership with the city. We plan on working hard to make sure that if this, if this event would be approved, that it not only be a success, but it becomes a staple event for the city of Hagerstown. We play, plan on taking every step and precaution at the fairgrounds not be, cause any damage to the fairgrounds, this event not cause damage to it. It's our home base. That would be counterproductive to what we're trying to do. We've reached out to the Hagerstown Youth Soccer League. They are on board with this. In fact, they are going to partner with us for this event if it would be approved. Same thing, trying to put money back into programs out at the fairgrounds. We also understand the concerns about having alcohol in an event like this, and we will take every precaution necessary to make sure that this is a reputable, family-friendly event. That's very important to us at the Police Athletic League. We've worked hard to develop a business case for this event. Brian Burke, our PAL treasurer, has passed the plan out to you guys to look at. He's gonna briefly go over that and then we'll answer any questions you guys have about our ideas for this fundraiser. Brian?
Thank you all. We've been planning this for about two months now and, and we created a budget for the event. We went through the line items on a budget. We've gotten, we've gotten estimates even up to today. I had the fence company out there today, meetings before coming here. And we believe that our concept, timing, the music genre, price, prices, cost, and revenue forecast are all within reason. So we're looking to have this event September 26, 2015. We're looking from around 12 o'clock PM to around 9 o'clock PM. We're looking at a ticket price between 25 and 30 pre-sale and $35 at the gate. We've worked with the fire marshal on this. The fire marshal has come out and has told us how many people that we can have in this area that we're looking for. There's, there's three soccer fields and we believe we mainly just need the first two soccer fields, not the third field, which is, which is leased through the YMCA. And that's, that's from the fire marshal and also from the fencing company today. Now, they told us we can fit, the fire marshal said we can fit 20-some thousand people in that area. We're not looking to do that. We're looking for 8,000, to cap it at 8,000. It's our first year. We think that's a manageable amount of people for what we're trying to do. And again, it's our first year and we don't want to be overboard. So again, we talked to Hazel, the other user groups for both the fields. They maintain the fields. I met with their president, their board of directors, conversed. They believe that this is a great idea. They're on board 100% with us for using that. Parking, again, we have nine months before this event could potentially happen. Logistically wise, we can plan for it in the next nine months. What our thoughts were was shuttle service from downtown. We'd like to have people park mainly in the downtown central lots, the parking garages downtown, and shuttled out to the fairgrounds. That way, there is exposure downtown before and after the event. We think that'd be good for the city.
And we can look at all different areas for shuttles.
We can look at, yes, several areas and I think we have enough time to do that. On site, on the actual site of the fairgrounds, we're looking at parking for sponsors parking, VIP parking, and vendor parking. We're going to use an internet-based ticket company called CrowdTorch. CrowdTorch provides internet ticket sales and also hard stock ticket sales. When people come to the gate, we'll be able to scan their tickets using scanners provided by this company, also from their phones, iPads, whatever they want to bring at that time. We're looking to have vendors. We're looking to have at least 20 vendors, food and craft vendors, artisan vendors. We are going to give a top priority, number one, to local vendors. We want local vendors in this community, food services, to come out and set up for this event. Security. We're looking to partner with the city police for security, mainly perimeter security, gate security. We also are looking into hiring a accredited security corporation to provide around five security personnel for the stage area, backstage area, and entry where the buses and the tour buses and the trucks would come in. We also feel that as far as with the alcohol sales, that when having alcohol sales, that we would like to cut it off prior to the final act of the evening. Before the final act comes, we cut it off. The final act should play for around an hour and 15 minutes to an hour and a half. That gives us time period from there to cut it off as well as getting people out to their cars. We're going to be very diligent with this, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to monitor this. We're going to have our, our people watching the sales. We're going to be there and take every step necessary to make sure that this is watched over very closely.
So I was curious about that. So the reason you want to cut sales off before the headliner is so that basically people can sober up before they go off?
If, if they need to sober up or if, I just think that's a great time. I think, it's just like a baseball game. You go to the World's Game of Seven thing, they're cutting it off. I think you cut it off then, that gives us an hour and a half, two hours at that point.
Sure.
And we don't feel with the type of crowd that we're trying to, looking for for this that we're going to have a major problem. It's country music, we're not having any...
I don't have a problem at all with selling alcohol.
Rock and roll.
Go to Vaisel and they have alcohol at every other stand because of beer. So, you know.
Blues Fest doesn't bring us any problems at all.
We, going into, going into marketing, we have a very big marketing budget, which includes a $40,000 in-kind marketing donation already from WAYZ. They've offered to give us $40,000 to help out with marketing through their station. We also plan on advertising out of market. We plan on Baltimore DC, Northern Virginia, and Central Pennsylvania.
Who, I saw that you said you would prop, work with a nonprofit for the shuttle service book? Do you have a model for that?
That was, that was just a suggestion that was made, I know, for the, the event out in Leidersburg, that the Community Action Council ran a shuttle, shuttling people out to there. That's something that we had in mind. Again, I think we have enough time, we can sit down.
Sure. Or even partner with a county commuter, I mean.
I don't think they're, they can do events.
Oh. So...
Yeah, that's, we looked into that a little bit.
Just like you can't park in there or have other buses go to their transfer center either.
Insurance purposes. I am obtaining quotes, I have a general quote of what it'll take. We're looking for $5 million blanket insurance coverage for the event. That covers the artist, the grounds, the artist's equipment, and we're also looking at a rain policy where it rains. Here's, this is where it happens. When it rains, we can judge that morning if we're going to have it or not. The day before, leading up, if there's rain, if we feel that the fields will be damaged, we're on control, we can stop the concert. And also, the artist has their discretion whether to play or not if it's raining. And that goes next with my talent. I've been talking with Nashville representatives for the past two months. We have enough budget where we feel that we can sign a headliner, possibly Travis Tritt, Craig Morgan, and Alan Jackson-type person. In fact, we are ready to sign a headliner if we can get this approved, and we feel that either one of those three people would, would bring in 8,000 people to Fairgrounds Park.
So, our main reason to come to you, A, is to ask for permission to have this at the Fairgrounds Park, knowing that we're going to be diligent in how we do it and making sure the fairgrounds are not harmed at all and making sure that this is a, like I said, a family-friendly and well-run event. And the second reason is for a partnership with the city, for some in-kind support with the police department, with police personnel, as well as utilities, some trash removal, those kind of in-kind services.
And the in-kind services, we could, again, we'd have to quantify at a later time to come back for exact amounts because we haven't gone through how much exactly everything would be.
We're looking for electrical hookup and we're looking for trash bins and trash removal is the main things we're looking for.
And Rodney's here, too.
Where are you getting your capital for your, I mean, how are you getting the startup money, so to speak?
Okay. We, we have money that we've raised previously. We have, we have a bank account with money set aside for this. Also, we will be going after sponsorships.
Okay.
But just for initial startup money, we have money in form of privately funded, we have money that we have raised, and we can also obtain a loan if need be. So we have the money.
I just didn't know if you were taking out a line of credit and, or anything like that. It sounds like you have all options on the table.
We have a lot of options on the table. We do have, we have money to seed this, to start this. We're prepared for that. And then, of course, as we develop sponsorships, we'd like a structured sponsorship, a lot like the Blues Fest. And that's, that's our goal to raise money that way as well.
We, we'd like it presented by a sponsor. And WAYZ gave us this idea of whoever presents it by, it will be, they will be, and on every radio broadcast of this event, it will be Country Fest presented by whomever.
Yeah, it sounds like you guys have put a lot of time and effort into this, and if anyone can pull off an event like this, I think it would be the Police Athletic League.
Thank you, sir.
And it's for a great cause. I think it, it does fill a genre niche that hasn't been filled here, and I think the least of our concerns would be the fact that alcohol's being sold at this event. But, you know, given all the other concerns that, potential concerns, I think all of those things can be worked out.
Outside of corporate amphitheaters in the state of Maryland, there is no major mainstream country music fest. Allegheny Fairgrounds holds a Dell Fest, which is bluegrass-oriented, whereas the Frederick Fair has country artists in for an evening setting after the fair days. But as far as a mainstream country music festival with the artists we're trying to obtain, there is none in the state of Maryland.
Yeah, I think it has the potential to be a great annual event. Sure.
Casper Taylor was Speaker of the House of Health. He used to have a country festival at Rocky Gap Park. They lasted two and a half days. They were extraordinarily successful. I can remember going up there to see Willie Nelson one time. He was incredible. It was raining to beat the band and lots of people went home, but the ones who stayed, he said to them, hey folks, as long as you're willing to stay and listen to me, I'm willing to sing.
Very cool. And if you got the money, honey, I got the time.
I was at the exact same, I was at the exact same festival.
Were you?
I'm from Hancock, so I, I went to that.
Remember that one.
I remember when Willie was there. My father was Maryland State Police and Work Security. He said, you can go to the, and we had backstage passes. He says, son, you can go to the festival, but you're not going backstage with Willie Nelson.
Well, the fact is, this has incredible potential to grow.
Yes, it does.
In the city of Hagerstown.
Well, and if approved, we would have to make sure that all the permits were there.
Absolutely.
Everything that's within that list are there, just everything that is allocated.
Don't forget that rain policy.
Yes, sir.
Then you really are out.
Yes.
I have to actually do different policies for inches of rain that we determine.
They know, we do this every year. We come to them, they look at me and say, okay.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait a minute, one question. Have you talked to the liquor board? Will there be any issues with the liquor board?
We have some options there, partnerships with people that already control liquor licenses, businesses, establishments. We're, you know, we're looking into all those things. We have to approach the liquor board about this specifically, but we didn't want to go before them without having this conversation and make it great. We want to make sure this happens first.
They would have to obtain probably a picnic license and they would have to go in front of them. The city would have to give approval for that.
Yeah, okay.
Karen, you're gonna come back with a budget for the city?
Yeah, we have to go over, Rodney and I both, on city services, what they're looking for, what are needed, and, and probably at a work session, I would imagine, in January because we haven't quantified exactly what they're looking for with that.
That's in-kind in nature.
Yes.
Well, in-kind, but if you're talking about a Saturday, you're talking about us paying somebody overtime, which will need to add to the budget. somebody overtime, which will need to add to the budget.
And we're, for us, we're looking to see if this, this event would be possible as the first step, because we've got, like you said, we are, we're in the position to sign some talent, but as you know, people will be going on vacation here for the Christmas season, and it'll be mid-January, and they may be booked up by that point. So we're really looking to try to see if this is a feasible, possible option here to have it at the fairgrounds.
Have you talked to the CVB, the Convention and Visitors Bureau?
Yes, I have.
About marketing and...
I have, and they're waiting on approval from the city at that point. I'm going to go in, and they're going to help me through the process with a grant that we can apply for through them.
Great.
Yes.
You know, if, if you're only going to charge $30 or $35 per ticket, there's a potential that you're going to sell a lot more tickets than you anticipate.
We are definitely capping this.
I know you want it limited to 8,000.
We are definitely capping this for the first year. It's more important to us that we do a good event, do it well, than it is to raise a ton of money one year and never be able to do the event again, because we've burnt all partnerships and we've, we've done a horrible event. It's important for us that we do this right. So 8,000 is our cap, with a little bit of wiggle room in there, but that's where we're going to cap it at.
Well, what I was going to suggest is you ought to have a little bit of wiggle room.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Because if, if you get 20,000 people contacting you saying, "We want tickets," I mean, you can't take that kind of a crowd.
Right.
You ought to be able to take a couple of thousand more, perhaps. If you plan for it, if you plan for it.
We, we will have real-time updates with our, with CrowdTorch ticketing agency. I met with their representative, and I will have daily ticket counts of when tickets go on sale. We're looking for an on-sale date of April, right after tax season's over, in conjunction with the radio station. Again, they'll be able to tell us every day. I'll be able to go and look, see how many we sold, where they're buying, where the folks are buying them from, everything else. That's for those who choose to buy online.
Here's a considerable estimated margin here. I bet you gave us the numbers.
Yes.
Given our budget situation, it's possible we may have to ask you for reimbursement. I'm just going to say, from my personal point of view, in order to make our city budget, help make our city budget work, I'd like, you know...
Absolutely, that's, that's absolutely an option. We have it in the business case.
I saw that you had that in there.
There could be return investment money for the in-con.
I saw you had that in there, so I appreciate you already put it in.
Absolutely.
And that may be where we have to apply it, at least for the next two years.
Yes, sir.
So if, like, if this is approved to, one, be at the fairgrounds, two, have alcohol sales, the next step would be coming back in mid-January on cost analysis for the public function city services portion?
I hear, I hear no objections to the use of fairgrounds.
But I think they need approval to go after acts.
I think they have sufficient approval.
I think you have sufficient approval to do that.
Thank you very much.
I can tell you, we can sign this.
Wanted to be clear.
Yes.
Well, I really appreciate all the work you've put into this and what you do with Powell, day in, day out, with kids in the neighborhoods. And Detective Varner, I hope you're getting a good team of folks together for that basketball game.
Yes, sir. I'll be stretching daily.
So I don't have to play, I can just cheer everybody up.
And you got to start their reindeer run on Saturday.
That's right, I'll be there, I'll be there.
Thank you guys for the support in that, too. Looking forward to a good crowd on Saturday, so.
We'll keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thanks. The next item on our agenda is a draft resolution. I just would like, if everyone would indulge me, to read this into the record, and for the viewing audience at home to know what we're talking about. This is a resolution establishing the City of Hagerstown's ongoing request that the state of Maryland allow for an opportunity for the City of Hagerstown to provide comment to the state in certain circumstances, whereas the state of Maryland requires, in the Land Use Article Title III, that municipal governments adopt a comprehensive plan which establishes, sets, and addresses the goals and objectives for the development and redevelopment of the city, and the improvement of the quality of life of its residents, whereas the state of Maryland further encourages municipal governments to obtain state designations, such as Sustainable Community, the A&amp;E District, the Main Street Maryland, and like designations, all which require corresponding plans. And whereas the City of Hagerstown has developed a vision for the city and its neighborhoods, and in accordance with the state requirements, adopted a comprehensive plan, a Sustainable Community Plan, an A&amp;E District Plan, and a Main Street Hagerstown Plan, and whereas the state of Maryland has further such planning by partnering with the City of Hagerstown, by funding the City of Hagerstown's redevelopment plan known as the City's Center Community Plan, Community City Center Plan, whereas the state of Maryland preempts the City of Hagerstown from regulating various organizations, service providers, and like entities which operate in or seek to operate in the city's corporate boundaries. And whereas the state of Maryland contracts with and/or provides licensure, permits, and/or funding to these same various organizations, service providers, and like entities operating in or seeking to operate within the corporate limits of the City of Hagerstown, and said operations be, may be incongruent with the city's established vision and plans, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council hereby approves and affirms an ongoing request that the state of Maryland, through its various departments, provides to the City of Hagerstown an opportunity to comment on all pending contracts and applications for licensure, permits, and/or funding requests being considered by the state of Maryland from organizations, service providers, and like entities operating, expanding, or proposing to establish operations within the corporate limits of the City of Hagerstown, to determine whether such operations, expansions, or plans to establish such operations are in support of the city's vision and plans. All such opportunities to comment shall be made to the city clerk. This, I think, is very crucial, and I think it's been touched upon here many times around the table, but we're really trying to get at here, which is this concentration of services in the city center that is not helpful to our goals and what our vision is for the neighborhoods and downtown and surrounding areas. Have I pretty much captured that, the essence of what we're trying to do here?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and from a staff perspective, we have one additional question. In terms of this resolution, what are the mayor and council's thoughts on having a resolution asking the county government and the federal government for the same types of opportunities to, to comment? For example, HUD signs hap agreements, Housing Assistance Program agreements, for tenant-based, or for project-based Section 8 properties, and the city is not afforded an opportunity to weigh in on, on those types of circumstances. And if the council so desired, we could craft similar resolutions, asking both the county and the federal government to do the same.
Separate resolutions from this one, but...
Yes, they'd be separate from this, but parallel.
I think it's a great idea. Anyone else?
It is, it is a great idea. And long overdue, thank you.
I think it's a good job you laid the groundwork out, and then proceeded to the meat of the argument.
And then, I don't know if you caught it, Marty, but the question from staff is whether or not we want to have a similar resolution aimed toward the county and the federal agencies as well.
Right.
So, yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is sidewalk and storefront amendments. Our distinguished planning director will return to the table. And the world-class city engineer.
It's a world-class planning director, too, by the way.
That's exactly right.
Okay. We're here before you present some proposed amendments to two chapters of the city code. Chapter 216, streets and sidewalks, we're proposing some standards and restrictions for private use of public sidewalks, and then amendments to the Land Management Code to protect storefronts in the city center for use by high-intensity commercial uses. The chapter 216, if the mayor and council want to move forward with it, we could introduce an ordinance this month. The Land Management Code amendments are in the process of being finalized with the Planning Commission, and we anticipate we may be having their public hearing, not only on this, but a comprehensive package of amendments to the Land Management Code in either January or February, depending on if they, if they wrap up all the sections this month. So that's, in a nutshell, what's going on, and how that could be implemented. The first thing we wanted to get to was the proposed amendments to chapter 216, streets and sidewalks. Back in 2013, this body recognized that, they adopted a resolution that recognized that our housing neighborhoods are the foundation upon which healthy communities are built, and the body committed to supply the necessary legislation and resources to establish and nurture housing in neighborhoods throughout the city. So in, in conjunction with that resolution, staff have looked at where our codes could use some tweaking to better protect the quality of life and image of the community. And one of the areas that's come to our attention is the, the sort of uncodified private use of public sidewalks that occurs occasionally downtown, or in some cases, policies that we've adopted but we haven't codified, that allow for private use of public sidewalks. So we're trying to bring those things together by creating a new article in the chapter 216, which addresses private use of public sidewalks for those types of activities that the mayor and council have deemed to be appropriate. And there's four areas that we're recommending be added to that, that chapter to address. One would be sidewalk displays of merchandise. The second one is the sidewalk cafe provisions. Third is yard sales on the sidewalk, and then the fourth is encroachments of structures and objects into the public right-of-way. So the first one is the sidewalk displays. We periodically get complaints about certain businesses, particularly in the city center, that have displays of merchandise on the sidewalk. We've included some photographs of the three that come to mind at present. These are constantly out on the sidewalk, and also rather disorderly, tends to look like landlord set-out. We get complaints, "Can't you do something about it?" Right now, the code just says you need to keep open a certain amount of width for the pedestrians. We don't really have a way of addressing this issue. And so we feel like it is important that it should be addressed, and so we're recommending a licensing process for abutting businesses and/or for city-sponsored or city-supported events, a two-different, like a two-pronged approach. For the abutting businesses, we're suggesting that we limit it to a certain number of times per year, and we, in the one paragraph I told you, we're, we're developing some standards. We don't have that finalized yet, but that would be, come to you in a future meeting. But, and then a more of a blanket license for city-sponsored or supported events, such as the pop-up shops. Some of them were out on the sidewalks. So instead of saying for pop-up events, each business would come forward, create some kind of blanket license that would cover all of the businesses that we're going to be setting up in the public right-of-way. And so what we would say is that the display of the merchandise on the public sidewalk shall be only permitted for the abutting businesses and/or for city-sponsored or city-supported events, if a license is granted by the city for a specific time, per the parameters outlined in the city's adopted standards and conditions for sidewalk business licenses. That, of course, is still in the works. The use of the public sidewalk for display of merchandise shall be subject to the criteria of those standards, and shall be operated as approved in the license. Any ongoing and unlicensed merchandise displayed in the public street right-of-way in existence as of the effective date of the ordinance shall cease upon the effective date of this amendment. The provision would not apply to those enterprises that are licensed under chapter 176, vendors, peddlers, and transient dealers, because that chapter covers those issues. It'll be like a hot dog stand, that kind of thing. The next one is the sidewalk cafes. We don't have this codified, but in 2007, the mayor and council adopted a policy and standards for licensing sidewalk cafes on the public right-of-way. What we're suggesting is that we add this provision to the city code, so that it's, so that folks want to know what's permitted downtown, have a place where they know they can go to find out what can happen on the sidewalks. So it's basically a very short provision. We're suggesting that the city engineer may grant a license to occupy a portion of the public sidewalks with seating for abutting restaurants, in those districts where restaurants are permitted use, provided that cafe area is delineated on a sidewalk cafe license, and that the seating area shall be subject to the criteria of the standards. And we've attached to this document the standards that were adopted by the mayor and council in 2007. So this is just proposing we codify what we've already adopted as a policy. The third one is yard sales. This occurs periodically, particularly in those neighborhoods where houses don't have a front yard, they just have a sidewalk. And we do not license yard sales on private property, so we're not suggesting that we license yard sales on the public right-of-way, but what we're suggesting is that we have the same criteria as in the Land Management Code. Land Management Code says you can have yard sales, but no more than four times per year, and for each event, no more than three consecutive days, so that we don't have permanent yard sales. Sometimes that occurs. People set up a sort of a quasi-business in their yard. And so this, suggesting that we allow yard sales to occur on the sidewalk, just as we do on private property, but have it comply with the same standards in the Land Management Code, and then also have a few extra things, because they are indeed on the sidewalk, and say that they have to have at least five feet of clearance, be kept open for pedestrian traffic, that no display would be in front of the building entrance, or two feet on either side, so you can still have good movement there, and that the display be at least 15 feet from any adjoining street, corner, alley, or drive-by to provide adequate sight distance, so you're not coming out of an alley, particularly in areas where the building is right here, and you're looking into the side of stuff that they're trying to sell. And then the last one is encroachments. Do you want to handle that one, Rodney?
Well, it's a similar thing to the cafes, and then a few years ago, we talked about the encroachments, and what I'm talking about there is like stoops, porches, handicap ramps, those kind of things. And the mayor and council at that time passed an ordinance to kind of set up what the staff would approve, what would come back to council, et cetera, but that really was never put into chapter 216, which is the sidewalk ordinance. So what's being suggested here is, basically, we take that ordinance that was passed some years ago, and basically insert it into 16, so everything involving sidewalk use is right here in one place. So basically, if it's just a replacement of a ramp, a replacement of a stoop, staff won't bother you with that, we'll take care of those things and issue those licenses for those things. But if it's like a new encroachment, or a enlarged encroachment, we'd bring those back to you periodically, and we've been doing that. So this, again, just puts it in the code, what we've been doing.
So the proposed amendments to chapter 216 were put together between planning, engineering, and economic development staff, because many of these things have an impact on all of our areas, so we got together to review this. And then we also sent the sidewalk business license proposal to the Downtown Alliance last month for their information input, and we, to this point, we have not received any comment from them, but we thought it'd be good to at least let them know, particularly about the licensing of the sidewalks displays. So again, if the mayor and council were interested in moving forward with these, we could formulate an ordinance for introduction next week, or if you want more time, or if you want to see the standards that we're talking about developing for the sidewalk displays, we could wait until next month. But that would be, the next step would be, if you were ready, it would be an introduction of an ordinance, either this month or next month, or...
I guess just to get the conversation started on the displays, what we had kicked around as staff is that outside the city events, these are, you know, if a business, the abutting business wants to have displays, they could do it maybe four times a year, up to no longer than three consecutive business days. But that's just something we've kind of settled in on, but...
Which matches the yard sale criteria.
That's where we came from.
Okay, and the, the next one has to do with storefronts, which is...
Are we okay to introduce them next week, or...
To me, the magic here is, you don't want to be so restrictive or imperial and impose another bureaucratic hoop, that, I mean, we, we need to make it quick, easy, and cheap to, to do these things. And, and that's the secret of, because if it's perceived as one more impediment downtown, and I, I really know what we're going after, I've been working on it on the Planning Commission for a while, but, but it also needs to be something we can do quickly and easily, and I'm not so sure, I want it to limit to four times, three days, because if somebody is really, has a nice quality thing, and it's in nobody's way, and it's creating business, and it's done well, then I don't know quite how to separate it from the stuff that we all walk past all the time, that you have in your picture. So you're right to go after that, but I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater. You know, so that's my concern, that somebody has a really good taste, quality thing, and we're limiting their ability, we're making them get a license every time, and, and that sort of thing. So that, that would be my, my comment, not the, not the intent, or not, not to do it, but trying to, to get that nature to it, so it, so it's easy. It's not another bureaucratic hoop.
Yeah, I totally hear what you're saying. With the cafe license, the way we do it is, we issue a license, and there's no charge. Usually, we can issue it within three or four days, business days. So I think the merchants that have license, and there's maybe 10 of them out there, they're, I think they're pretty satisfied with that. The only thing we need from them every year is certificate of insurance. So we keep track of that, and they keep updating that. So I think, I think we can do this efficiently, and not be too onerous on the people that are using it. I guess the question is, how much are we allowing them to, to do it, and what are we actually permitting?
Right, and, and that's very hard to describe. I fully understand it, but it's my concern. Not so much the cafe, but the putting an outdoor display.
Right.
We were thinking of somehow being able to develop that as an annual license, rather than them coming in to Rodney's office every... than I'm coming in to Rodney's office every...
I don't want to have to deal with that every time, to be honest.
Well, those are the kind of streamlinings, but even the annual license ought to be a, you know, a fairly, look at it, maybe even less than three, you know, four days or something.
And that wouldn't include like a sandwich board sign that's advertising... Their lunch special or whatever that day. That's not what we're talking about here. What is up with, you can have a sidewalk cafe license, and you don't have to put up an enclosure unless you're serving alcohol, right?
That's correct.
So, like the goat, I know they put out tables and chairs, but they're not serving alcohol out there. What is up with the fences, though? Why do we need fences, just because there's alcohol? Is there some magic that happens when you put up a fence?
Provides control.
Of what? I don't underst, I mean, it's this, it's Mr. City Attorney.
Minors from coming up and being served by...
This is an issue.
Excuse me.
How does a fence keep that from happening, though? I don't think there's any magic with these fences, and I think what we have are these stupid fences that block people from having easy access to our sidewalks, especially when it's winter time and there's nothing inside of them. Or like at the pace of flying pie, where now you have the issue of you have to go through this enclosure to just access the apartment building if you live in the residence above it. And it's just one of these puritanical antiquated rules that I think we have that we need to kind of get over, just because we're serving alcohol. I mean, again, I say, go to Vaisal, Germany, and they don't have fences around every place that serves alcohol in a sidewalk cafe. And, and, and they don't have a problem with underage drinking either. So, I just think it's something to keep looking at, because it doesn't make any sense.
And chief, would you send a comment to me on that, please? Because I don't think you're going to be allowed to come to the table. We're running too close to time. Okay.
That was just a thought that I had when I saw that the barriers and enclosures for these outdoor dining areas are still part of that. But I understand it's part of the current liquor regime here that we have.
It's strictly local. It's county by county how these are treated. So, it'd be a case of re-entertaining this with the liquor board to see if they'd be willing to allow it without fences.
It just doesn't make any, I don't see any magic in a fence preventing underage drinking or corralling drunks. I mean, I don't understand what the purpose of the fence is. Just my personal, personal point of view. And then, do you want to mention the storefront protection?
Yes, this is more of an update to let you know what's coming. The Planning Commission of the last several months have been reviewing a comprehensive package of amendments to the Land Management Code, one of which the staff proposed is to create a means of protecting the storefronts in the city center for higher intensity uses, because both staff and the mayor and council have been voicing concerns in recent months over the loss of retail storefronts in the city center for offices and other low-intensity uses. So, to address that concern, what we propose is creating a storefront protection zone in a portion of the city center. And there's a map attached at the back of the package. The green area in the map is the city center mixed-use zoning district. The red is the area of the highest concentration of storefronts in the downtown area. And so, what we're suggesting is, in that red area, the storefronts can only be occupied by a list of certain types of higher-intensity business, commercial uses, restaurants, retail, that kind of thing. And attached in here is what the Planning Commission tentatively finalized last month, of the list of uses that are trying to get at that, that the uses that have the potential to attract additional pedestrian traffic and private investment to the city center, and will support the city center's cluster of arts, culture, and education-related activities. All lower-intensity uses, such as offices, warehouses, churches, et cetera, in the storefront protection zone need to be located in a non-storefront space, such as behind storefronts or on upper floors, or in buildings that do not contain storefronts. There's plenty of commercial buildings downtown that don't actually have storefronts, or in single-user institutional buildings, such as City Hall, USMH, Visbo Library Buildings like that, or single-user auditorium buildings, Maryland Theater, Bridge of Life. And those types of buildings, you could have any type of activity on the ground floor. What we're saying is, if you have a building that is a mixed-use building with a storefront on the ground floor, it needs to be retained for use by one of these higher-intensity commercial uses, not be consumed or even removed to make way for a lower-intensity use. And so, we saw language along these lines in the ordinances in San Francisco and Seattle. Not exactly what we have, but in certain districts, they're saying storefronts have to be occupied a certain way because they were trying to encourage a certain type of activity.
I really like this, because it goes to one of my chief complaints from when I was on the Planning Commission, that we're very good about saying what we don't want, but this helps us establish a list of things we do want to try to encourage in our central business district. So, I think it's a worthy effort.
So, that's a heads up on storefronts.
Yeah. We hope if we can get things wrapped up tomorrow night with the Planning Commission and the entire package, that we might have the public hearing in January. If there still needs to be some tweaking, then it would be February. And then, after they wrap it up, it would be recommended onto you for your review and action, including a hearing.
Thank you very much.
Kathy, could I just ask you one question? Is there anything that we're doing here this evening that we'd, well, impose upon some kid who wants to open up a lemonade stand to fight breast cancer? Would we prevent that, or make it too bureaucratic, or would we make it impossible to do that? I mean, this happens across the United States a couple of times a year, and it's always embarrassing to the community when it happens. So, have we, are we talking about doing anything that we...
No, that's covered in the peddler vendors and transient merchants, and they are excluded.
Just want to make sure. Okay.
Thank you very much. Last, but certainly not least, we have our friends, the Bowman Group, here to talk about the pedestrian bridge construction, the A&E deck.
Right. Rob Farie and Jeff Hedrick are here from Bowman Development. Thank them for coming in. Basically, what happened is, they applied for a building permit to construct a bridge from the Walker House at 28 South, it was about 30, South Potomac Street, to connect from the Walker House to the A&E parking deck. This has been talked about ever since the parking deck was built, but it's actually now becoming a reality. What they need is direct access into the second-floor suites that they have to give them handicapped accessibility and just convenience for the suites and the people that would occupy them. So, this issue, I think there's kind of two sides to this. There's kind of the legal component of it, and there's the building permit side of it. On the legal side of it, I think the issue is, do they have everything in place that we need to allow the construction to take place and for them to use it over time? The easement agreement that we put together in 2008 doesn't specifically say they can build a bridge, but what it does say is that whatever walkways and things that are built, they have the right to access it, and we have the right to, the public has the right to access it back. So, we feel that there is an access easement there, that once the thing is built, it'll allow for the public to use it, and certainly their tenants to use it. On the building side, a building permit is required. We are the owner of the parking deck, so we would need to approve them as the owner to connect to our structure. So, through the building permit process, that would be addressed, and the engineering, that would be done appropriately. We would probably need to execute an affidavit just to show the building permit staff that the city, as the owner of the parking deck, grants permission for them to connect to our structure. So, that's kind of the two issues. So, that's kind of where we're at. And if the consensus is to let them move forward, we would issue the building permit to them, and I think this could move forward.
Any objections?
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
Why not? We're not being asked for any financial contribution.
My understanding is they would be in charge of maintenance of the structure also.
Yes, it's basically above their property.
So, it's an improvement, and hey, let's go for it.
Helps make their property more marketable.
There's no parking spaces that are lost.
It was, I understand it was designed for this very potential modification.
It'll take some modification, but make sure that happens.
They do this in other places, all. Baltimore does this.
Great idea.
Good job.
Go forth and prosper.
This is another subject, so let's go on. While Rodney's here, were we gonna, did I miss the marsh run trail? There was a memo.
That is in the, I'm sorry, preliminary agenda.
But it's in the consent call. We need, we haven't discussed it, have we?
I'm sorry, it's new business under preliminary agenda for next week.
Did we go over that?
We did.
Okay.
I didn't hear any comments, but go ahead if you have a question.
Well, no, I agree with it. I just wanted to make sure CSX was, you know...
Thank you.
You know, you keep us informed about it. I had some other technical stuff, and I'll just go over it with you. When I looked at the report, but rather than take everybody's time, I'll talk to you.
Oh, come on. Can't I bring, I'm interested in stuff like that. I followed that thing. Ask Rodney. I followed that the whole way through my term here.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
While Eric's here, while we're ready for comments.
For me, I was going to ask Eric just to address Councilmember Nye's concerns over the clocks that were raised last week.
Clocks, clocks. We haven't found anybody. And don't tell me that they're old. I've already seen that.
Yes. They are an antiquated system. It has not been, our staff has worked on it continuously since I've been here, so that's been 15 years. There's two issues. The clocks are the ones on the clock tower here on this building. The other one is the clock in the square, which is our Bruce Carson's, well, it's not their clock, but it's their names on it. Neither project has been a high priority for us. We've had some other things, including Christmas decorating and some projects here.
I know that.
It just hasn't been a high priority for us. So, that's why I haven't moved on.
I know that. It's just that I see it five days a week.
What's that?
Isn't part, aren't parts one of the major issues?
I'm sure that'll be part of the issue. I mean, there's four separate clocks up here. It's not one motor that runs off. There's four separate motors. Two of them have just, I mean, we've rewired, we've done everything we can, but I have to find somebody that can actually work on it. And it's not as simple as just call an electrician or somebody.
But that's what the intent was. It was to find someone to do it and to see how much it would be.
Correct.
It's very...
I just haven't got to it yet.
No. I didn't say that. I asked the question, can we look at it?
Sure.
That's what it was.
Absolutely.
But don't take two years to do it. Okay?
Yes, ma'am.
That's all. I mean, like I said, Switzerland, Austria, wherever.
I'll do it.
It's the broken window theory.
It certainly is.
Seriously, it's the broken window theory.
It is.
Things need to work or...
When you go down, when you go down Washington Street and you see Hagerstown Trust, what was the other one? Was Susquehanna, did they have one? Hagerstown Trust is the one that really sticks out at me where it's blank. Then you come to the square, you're in the square, you look up here, clock tower, doesn't work. Look here, Carson's, doesn't work. You come up this way, and you see then city, it's like, okay, you know what? You got to fix something.
Well, the face on the west side, it's hard to see unless you, because the traffic flows away from it. So, that when that one broke, it was like, that's not too bad. But when this one broke, you're right, it's very visible.
Yeah. And it is the broken window theory. It really is, you know? All you have to do is improve one site, then maybe another site will be improved as well. And that's, you know, and Lou needs to really go home. So, thank you very much.
Let me see if I can find somebody first. We'll see what the options are.
Let me ask you.
Yes, sir.
These are different devices we're talking about. The one downtown is different from the ones up here.
That is correct.
And if it turns out that you can't find people who know how to deal with it, is there any possibility you could send some, one of your staff someplace to try to learn how to deal with this, or...
I have no idea.
Okay. Something to consider, perhaps.
I mean, I'm sure they would like a field trip overseas to Europe to maybe learn how it, maybe, I don't know.
I'm not talking about overseas.
Nice little trip to Switzerland, yeah, or Austria, or wherever, that's where I am.
There are still people...
Getting a little skiing on the...
Right. There are still people who fix watches. So, you know what?
I'm sure there's people out there that have the skill level, but trying to find them is getting me.
Okay. We'll see how fast we can do it.
When I think in the next fiscal year, you have the, you have some, you're planning on painting the clock tower, too. So, I'd imagine getting the clocks fixed, painting the clock tower, we'll all...
It's in the budget next year to have the clock tower painted.
To get done all at the same time. It'll be like a whole brand-new clock tower up there.
Could be.
I mean, we could always get the ones like the cuckoo clocks, and you could have four different people going around the thing. This is humans, okay, doing it.
All right. We've definitely reached that point of the meeting. Thanks, Eric.
Okay, Eric. Sooner, not later.
Mr. City Administrator?
I was mine.
Okay. Mr. Metzner?
Ms. Nye?
Thanks you very much to the city for all of the tree planting that has gone on, and I am so disappointed, because I really wanted two trees in front of my house, and can't have them, because I don't have enough of sidewalk. And believe me, I was measuring, because in that 500 block, how'd the day get by with that? I'm okay right at the steps, but the trees will be a wonderful addition.
It's nice to see them all over.
And you know, there's only just so, you know, if we could just do a smaller and a smaller tree.
There you go.
I want something to come up to shade. But anyway, it's an improvement.
Mr. Munson?
No comments this evening.
Mr. Brubaker?
Do not.
Wow. Well, we might just actually end on time, but please indulge me in a few comments. I want to thank staff and the community partners who helped make the Christmas tree lighting, despite the rain on Friday, a success. Thank you to the Arts Council, who held their awards and are also a great partner of ours in the downtown. I also wanted to mention that you can sign up now for the Hub City 100-miler, and apparently, you can also sign up your dogs. So, Fido needs to get a good 100 miles in in 100 days, too. I know my dogs do. So, they're going to be doing it with me this year. They don't know it yet, but they will be. And December 11th, this Thursday, at the library, 7 o'clock is our public meeting to discuss our goals and priorities. So, I've been working with staff on that presentation, looking forward to that. And also, I just wanted to congratulate Rabbi Ari Plost, who got installed last Friday at the congregation Beni Abraham. I was lucky enough to be invited to come and speak and give him a welcome. And I also, I think I sent an email out today. I think he would make an excellent addition to the Ethics Commission, given the vacancy that was created by Brett Wilson's departure. So, look forward to working with him. He's got a lot of great ideas and energy and enthusiasm, lives in the downtown, in the neighborhood of the congregation, and he brings a lot of energy and vitality to the job. So, congratulations to him. And with that, we will be adjourned.